Six oh. Welcome, everyone, and if you would rise with us for flag noises.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first things on the agenda are some recognitions for the district. The first one is Andrea Gosling. Would you like to come forward?
All right. Mrs. Andrea Gosling is-
Andrea.
Andrea.
I'm sorry, but my dad would be really mad.
Andrea Gosling, the 2022 Hillsborough R3 Teacher of the Year, has been selected for an award of recognition of her outstanding achievement in the classroom. This evening, we'd like to present Ms. Gosling for being chosen as a 2022 Emerson's Excellence in Teaching Award recipient, and present her with a certificate from Emerson and a crystal apple paperweight from Tiffany &amp; Company. Congratulations, Ms. Gosling. You're a wonderful representative of our district.
Do you want me to take out?
I think that would be really okay.
Never had anything from Tiffany's before.
Maybe, then there was a nervous rush.
Oh, my, it's all wrapped up. There we go. So beautiful.
It has her name on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful, congratulations. Okay, then the second one, Mindy Russo. Kinda Russo, kindergarten teacher.
All right. Thanks to a nomination by kindergarten Mindy Russo, the Hillsborough School District received a donation of a full truckload, sixty pallets, of Lysol wipes. The donation is part of Frontline Impact Project's Heroes for Healthy Schools campaign with Lysol. Wipes were delivered in November and have been distributed across the buildings in the district. We'd like to thank Ms. Russo for her nominating of our district and Mr. Bass for coordinating the delivery and dispersal.
Next, Dr. Kathy Freeman.
Yes, the Missouri Association of Element-
Stand up.
Stand up.
That's her, so you didn't know that.
The Missouri Association of Elementary School Principals has named Dr. Kathy Freeman one of the eleven Missouri Distinguished Principal Honorees in the state of Missouri. The distinguished, National Distinguished Principals Program recognizes outstanding elementary and middle-level principals from across the nation. One of the eleven nominees will be selected as a Missouri National Distinguished Principal, and that announcement will be made at the M A E S P Conference in March. It's actually on March 4th. In October, the selected principal will represent Missouri at the National Distinguished Principal Celebration in Washington, DC. Congratulations to Dr. Kathy Freeman.
It's not my favorite. And Mike will have a better picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And food service, good news.
Yes, we have recently received several generous donations from our staff and community. Morris Mill Baptist Church donated $658. The Knights of Columbus in Hillsborough donated two $500 checks recently. The Intermediate Teachers donated $185. The Guardian Hawks, $765.23. And Tim Lawington gave $42.45. Our students need to focus on academics. We're not about having a negative lunch debt, and we are fortunate to have many compassionate people in our school and community. These donations have made such a tremendous impact on helping our students in all buildings. We can't thank them enough for their support.
Okay, thank you. We have one visitor to address the board. Gloria Link, if you would like to come forward. Morning. Good evening. It is evening, isn't it? Yes, yes, yes. You will be allowed three minutes to address the board per policy BDDH. The board asks that you limit your comments to topics that are appropriate to bring before the board. Please understand that I may interrupt you if comments stray into an area that should not be discussed in open session. Finally, the Board of Education is limited by the Sunshine Law, and it is unlikely that members will be able to respond to your comments during this meeting. Okay? I must begin it.
Okay. I just wanted to introduce myself. I am one of the candidates for the one-year term for the open board position. The only person I've really met is Miss Noack, Betsy, I guess? Is that okay? I've gotten to know some of you from watching the school board meetings.
Oh, lucky you.
So I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself. I've probably spoken to some of you because I am a diligent voter. When your names come up on the ballot, if I'm able to get in contact with you at all, I probably have reached out and spoke to you personally over the phone, or maybe I've even come to your house if I didn't have a phone number. But I'm very interested in being able to serve on the school board, so I just wanted to introduce myself and say hi.
Hello.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I did skip one recognition. The Hillsborough Elementary Rocket Hawks.
Well, I won't tell the third grader or the fourth graders because they're probably in bed very early tomorrow morning to go to the Hillsborough. They'll be, excuse me, I guess I'm going to start over. The Hillsborough Rocket Hawks will perform tomorrow at 10:30 a.m. at the 85th Annual M M E A Conference. This is the second time the Rocket Hawks have performed at the conference. The last time was in 2011. Congratulations to the students and their director, Ms. Amy Smith, on this tremendous honor. I included the attachments of the program that has a complete list of the students and information about the choir is in the board packet for public viewing.
So they're going tomorrow morning? Awesome.
They're going early tomorrow morning.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Moving on to items on the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda as presented.
So.
John with an H.
Sir.
And Eric. Any ones that you want, need to pull off or discussion questions?
I just have ones. I know it's every meeting we have, the investment desk. I just wanted to ask, have you looked into, are you, is this district table to invest in bond, US bonds or treasuries? Because I see, you know, you do money markets and CDs.
I do those because I look into that. What were the-
The I-bonds, the inflation bonds?
Yeah, when you're not investing those.
You can? Is there a reason? Do you know why? Because it was like anyone with a EIN or TI, you know?
I reach out to the individuals that know the rules for investing for us.
Oh, okay. Did they give a reason or? Because, I mean, six point eight, you know, even though it's a small amount per year, six point eight percent was-
No, but I can definitely-
Okay. Because, you know, I did notice on the investment data there was like one that you had was like three point something percent. I was wondering what that was about because the others were CDs, which are just above the, what you get for a treasury, which is fine. But there was one sitting-
The term investment?
Yeah, and, you know, it was three point three five percent, which is pretty sad, so I didn't, I didn't know what that-
I got one at four point eight.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's timing too. Like that purchase date was in August.
August, yeah.
And they've gone up significantly, well, somewhat.
The CDs have, but they've lagged the treasuries a bit, you know, because the Fed funds rate was already well above that at that time, so.
We're limited, but I can give those rules for you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Didn't mean to bend your ear on it, I just-
Any other questions, comments? Okay, all of those in favor of the consent agenda as presented. Six oh. Moving on to reports, beginning with superintendent report.
All right. First off, I want to give the public some information on the Board of Education signups. We had, for our three-year term, there was three seats available, and we had three individuals sign up. Angie Oshie, incumbent. Beth Petrie, incumbent. And Eric Stevenson, incumbent. As the only three individuals to sign up, they will be appointed to those seats officially for another three-year term at the April 23rd board meeting, so congratulations to them. And then for the one-year term, we had one seat available. Ms. Link, Gloria Link has signed up, as well as Stephanie Cage. So that will be the only issue that the school district will have on the ballot on April 4th. A reminder that, from the Missouri Ethics Commission, your name has been submitted to them. So there's some paperwork that needs to be done with the personal financial disclosure. If you were a candidate, that's already been completed if you had signed up for the, for the April election. Put some information in there regarding, some information that just came from DESI regarding funding. They have extended the provision that allows a district to use prior year's attendance for the purpose of our ADA and financial, the state aid that we get. And so put some information in there that's positive for districts in the state of Missouri and for us. And so that's only a one-year extension. That's some good news coming out of Jefferson City. I did want to discuss the high school incident from the 13th. And specifically, I feel the district needs to update some of our social media protocols and put some steps in there that we need to consider that's more geared towards individuals participating in our social media page on Facebook and Twitter and such. Those were taken down that Saturday. In part, one, it wasn't informational at that time, but I made the decision to take that down because, quite frankly, the adults on the page were embarrassing, and we had a child there that was eviscerated online by adults with false information, lies, that they said were truths, but brought no factual information to that, and carrying on and carrying on. And at the end of the day, every parent who has a child here, they would have no time if that was an adult talking about their child. Absolutely no time. But they chose to do it about another child because they knew the facts or chose the facts. And unfortunately, I understand that we're not always able to, we're dealing with minors and kids, and we can't always give details on discipline. But the individual in this case, there wasn't, nothing had happened the prior year. All these allegations towards that child that are completely inappropriate. It's inappropriate for a child to do it. And these adults, it's hard enough to deal with in school when they're following what's occurring at home. And obviously, you can tell they're fired up about it. Some people probably be watching it at home. Is, if you're caught with those questions, you don't post it on social media about someone else's child. And I think if we're going to do that is, we have a duty protect kids here, and we're doing the best we can on that. But when you put on social media that somebody else's child did this, and I know that they brought a gun, or this, you're posting factual information. If you're not reporting that to the police or bringing that to the attention for the safety of school, that's a lie. And we have, as a district, when you're posting on our page, I think, and I've contacted school attorney, is we implement some social media guidelines to delete those posts, obviously, immediately because we're serving as a billboard of disparaging remarks regarding our kids if it doesn't serve that purpose. Secondly, is potentially is, we do have the ability, and this probably warrants some board discussion, to block those individuals from our social media pages, even if their children attend the district because they're not using that. For the school district, that is a purpose for us to share information, not serve as a message board to eviscerate other people's children. And if people have questions about that, I took some emails with parents who had concerns, but they emailed. When I called them back, as parents, there's nothing wrong with being concerned about your children, but there's a proper forum of which to do that. That, that's doing nothing but creating chaos. And for the police department, for the staff that's also trying to ensure the safety of kids, and all of that was in control. The Hillsborough Police Department led that throughout that entire period of time. And some of those things, we wouldn't allow kids to walk in to that. We have our own kids in these buildings. We're just not going to do that. And so the district could have the ability. We suspend kids for behavior as such. Is the district, if there's adults through social media, now it would have to be on the district Facebook, not their own. But if they're posting a comment about one of our district children, how far do we want to take that to? We have banned individuals from campus because there has been a violation of, or a threat to, it's not always physical, just they're not appropriate for to be on campus. Is, if you're that child, and maybe you see, oh, that's the parent that thinks that about me because they display it, do we owe it to that child to when they go to a school? They don't have to see that adult. The adult doesn't have to attend. Kids do have a right to a free and appropriate education. Adults don't have to be on campus. Now, I don't think we could, that would not be for parent-teacher conferences or academic items, but it could be for a class party. It could be for any items that the district would deem thing. Not an IEP meeting or something like that, but athletic events is. I think the time is, after reading that, quite frankly, is, it served, it wasn't, I don't want to take all the comments off either. That's punishing the class for the actions of a few. And most of the time, our social media page is information sharing. Hey, when's that party? It's at four o'clock. Is, that's an effective flow of communication. And I think that we just can't have what happened again. And if it does happen, the individuals that participate in that, I think we owe it to the children of this district to consecrate them, or, you know, there has to be consequences. Or, you know, if somebody's saying this, how come they're not driving that, that evidence up to school to share with either school staff or the police department? And absent of that, I don't know. I think parents need to look themselves there as, how is that, they're in this Board of Education meeting if that was about their child? But we have a day, I've just thrown out a bunch of comments about what I noticed about, and then us trying to overcome that and, if you, I think it's a rumor, I heard it's, then don't share it. Or you call the administrator or the police department. On social media is not helping anything. It's wasting people's time, and it's hurting people.
So this discussion at another time, or do you want to throw in now?
Um, I think-
Because we have censored board members in the past for inappropriate behavior, and-
I think that it warrants an agenda item. I think in the future to, I think we could put our social media guidelines. I've gotten those from the attorney, and I included them in there. I don't know that that necessarily would require board action just to put that on there. And we have the ability to delete comments that are vulgar, abusive, hateful, personal attacks, threats of any kind, comments that are clearly off-topic or spam, comments that make unsupported accusations, so those will just be deleted. Comments that reference employees or students by name or other identifying information, whether by direct or indirect reference, is just delete those. I think for the decision of blocking them on there, I think probably that should be a board action to whether we want to go to that level because you are, you know, and kind of determine the length of time. And for sure, if it is a banning from campus, is there some logistical items there? I feel like even in this situation here, the expectations weren't necessarily, I think a letter potentially, in this instance, you would have been banned type of situation because I think we need to communicate that out and just have some discussion about that. And that be an agenda item, and potentially that may be a policy item.
And I think it's important to note with these guidelines and to make sure we say it, because you know people are going to say this, well, they're just trying to censor us. They're just trying to, they don't want to be transparent. That's not it at all. It's about the protection of our students first, and that's, that's all this is. So, I mean, I, you know, we're going to hear that when this, you know, when this is made public, or, you know, when this is actually out there and people see that, that's going to be what they're going to say. That's not this at all. And that, I think that needs to be, that point needs to really be driven home. This is, we educate our kids and protect our kids. Those are the two most important duties that we have as a district. And I think that's, you know, that has to be understood.
It's legitimate to worry about abuse of power whenever you take your power, but if there's an appeals process or something along that line, I mean, you know, some redress like, hey, you know, I really was posting something true kind of thing. Here's the proof. Fine, but-
But to that, I would also say-
You don't, I mean, we are liable for libel as publishers of lies about someone. You know, that's suable offense there, so.
And that's kind of my perspective on that is, it's Facebook, and that's our district page, but in a sense, that's our school. It's got our name on it.
Yeah, it's, we're the publisher.
It's the virtual blackboard.
It's putting it up on-
I mean, Facebook is too, but, you know.
On the marquee, essentially. And the thing is, to that from a transparency standpoint, as a parent, they may be sitting there like, well, the superintendent didn't want, here's, call the police department, call and ask me, call a Board of Education, who's my employer? I have no problem being held accountable for that. But on Facebook is not holding anyone accountable. That's just spewing potentially misinformation. And if it's accurate information, that's not the place to put that. I guarantee you, the Hillsborough Police Department isn't going there cruising to try to get their evidence. That's not also going to be the most expedient way, especially when we talk about threats and stuff like that, is hopefully a law enforcement officer just happens to read it in the comment? Like, that's, it's not a productive-
You need to protect our staff too.
Yes.
I mean, our staff have kids that go here. Our staff are trying to do right by the kids. And I learned when I got on the board that the public just doesn't, isn't allowed to know some of this stuff. And, you know, there's things-
I just, I just wish the public would realize that, you know, like I said before, that safety is going to come first. And, you know, I personally, yes, I sit on this board. Yes, I've got three kids that go here. But I had no doubt that Mark and his team had my kids' best interests at heart in their safety and everybody else in that building at that time. I had no question whatsoever. I just wish everyone understood that, that, you know, that's the thought process behind our team that we've got here. And really, every educator, administrator, whomever, you know, they care about these kids.
The kids come first.
And I think also, and I, in some of those comments, is, in this day and age is, the kids see the threat. I mean, there is some trauma that's going on with this always occurring. And with us, when people put, you know, a student had that and brought that, if a student reads that, they don't, that's ingrained. Did they have a, like, it creates doubt or creates, it furthers the very fear that they're trying to say is occurring all the time. And that's not assisting in this. And so it's not that we don't want to talk about it. It's not that we don't want to have, like, is, the comments on there need to be, hey, do I need to come and pick up my child? What is the exit process to all that? Like, what is that waiting on an update? And our updates, I know that people want immediate updates, but as soon as we could send that out, we did, and putting it together so that it was factual. Because if we send things out, then we end up, in our line of work, I'm not trying to be Fox Two News and get the first, and be Nelson against Fox Two, right? That, we have to get it right.
The only comment I would have to suggest is that any comments coming from the district should come from the district account because, you know, if I post as a board member, no matter what I post, individuals may see that as truthful or wholesome, the hundred percent facts. And I'm not communicating on behalf of the district whenever I post. I tried to make it very clear, I'm posting as mom, or in my opinion, as a mom, but I'm not communicating on behalf of the district. And I think it's important that, you know, for our, our staff members and our educators, that we let the district handle the communication going out. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that they try to diffuse the situation, but again, you know, I may see somebody from maintenance comment. I know they're from maintenance, but somebody else in the community may just know them as a school employee. And, you know, they may see what they're saying as, oh, well, the school said this versus an individual. So I just think we need to be careful with that.
And to have that well communicated.
Correct.
Posted where it's accessible to everybody.
So I will add that, if I may, to next month's agenda, and then also. In the meantime, is initiate the Facebook comment guidelines for the purpose of deleting comments and start at that initial measure immediately. Two other items is Hillsborough Hawk, our school district Hawk Award nominations are now out. I encourage the public to complete a Hillsborough R3 Board of Education Hawk Award nomination form. Any employee or volunteer of the Hillsborough R3 School District is eligible. Please nominate anyone that has demonstrated outstanding achievement or service to the Hillsborough School District or the community. Nomination forms should be sent to Betsy Noack at Central Office, either through email or regular mail. Nominations are due by February 17, 2023. And one final item is, we need to set a date for the board, a board workshop on some goal setting and- Preliminary just some data and, uh, financial items and just kind of, or kind of a midwinter workshop. Does the. Almost February fourteenth. I almost got everyone in trouble.
You did.
I did. I was like, the fourteenth is like so wide open.
I would say.
I don't know. John, call the meeting. I'm sorry. Would the, we talked about, what about the fifteenth that Wednesday?
Wednesday night?
Cause I know that there's some, um, Ms. Hildreth's got her academic team and I was going to try to maybe coordinate leadership and governance team before that and kind of piggyback in to that with the fifteenth. For the strategic plan, would that work at five thirty?
Does anybody have not work for five thirty, fifteenth?
On February fifteenth?
It's at five thirty?
Five thirty. Is anybody okay with that? All right. Put it in your calendar.
That's all I have?
Okay. He early.
All right, good evening.
Hi, Eric. I really didn't know who you are.
All right, so I turned in our technology program evaluation. So right over that, I'm just going to review some items out of there. And then also I've got another list I'm going to go through real quick. So I'm going to recap, um, sort of last year and then the first half of this school year. So that's where we're at. So starting with our work order numbers. So, uh, we had, uh, over eight hundred fifty work orders completed last school year. And, uh, I always put this little caveat in there because some work orders might take, you know, a few days, some might take, you know, fifteen minutes. And so. And then the first half of this school year, um, we have over six hundred completed this, uh, first half of this school year. So we're already just within about two hundred, you know, of last year. So it's been a busy start of the school year. The Chromebook repair, um, numbers. Um, so we've been keeping busy with that. And we had some issues with some of our HP Chromebooks. There is a, so a known issue that we got them to say, yeah, this is a known issue. There's some others that, um, were known issues that we didn't necessarily get anywhere with, but we still have to repair. But, um, HP on one of our models, uh, G eight, they are able to ex, not extend the warranty, but I guess renew the warranty until the summer to take care of that known issue. So they're repairing whatever goes wrong with those G eight, um, even though they're out of warranty, um, Chromebooks. So that was nice to, um, for them to help us out with that. So, but the numbers from last school year, um, were over a thousand Chromebooks that we had to repair. And then so far this school year, over seven hundred that we've had to repair. So we've got quite a, quite a bit of Chromebooks that we've had to have to repair considering we have about thirty-three hundred kids, so.
Is that normally from just normal wear and tear or is that abuse?
Well, that, and that's, um, I think a lot of that has to do with known issues or the issues. I mean, there's certain grade levels that are a little rougher than others. And even hearing from districts before we went one to one, that's come to pass. Um, so, um, I know at the primary level, they've taken measures. To where they don't always need to go home. And so they've kept a lot of Chromebooks there while they need to keep them within the building. So that's, that's definitely helped lower those numbers at the, at the primaries.
Cause if there's any issues that need to be, you know, addressed like that.
Yeah.
So that you guys aren't working your tails off repairing it because the kids are being careless or something.
Yeah, it's, uh, we deal with all kinds of issues, so. Some end up, ended up in a creek or, you know, it's all kinds of interesting, you know, scenarios, so.
So you don't think it's aging, the aging of the.
No, I think we've gotten rid of those. That was, um, yeah, um, just last year, we got kind of beyond the really old ones that we kind of taken. We took from the classroom sets and migrated those into our one-on-one program. So I think now it's just, um, break, fix and, and issues we've experienced with particular models. Um, and then, so our numbers are down on registering for insurance. Last year they're over sixteen hundred. And then this year they're just over twelve fifty registered for insurance. But that definitely helps in cutting the cost down for our, our parents. And then, um, and also. But that gives them, first instance, that's a free repair. And then after that, as long as it's not an intentional damage. Um, after that, then it's a twenty dollar repair. So I think we've got some reasonable prices and we're staying in the black on our Chromebook repair program. Um, so that's working out good. All right, so let's go to, um, so access points. So our access points were going out of support, uh, wireless access points, which provide wireless to our Chromebooks and wireless devices. Our entire fleet was starting to go out of support. Um, so if we had any issues and we called and asked for help, we wouldn't be able to get that help. There was a, so I had brought that up, um, especially after the bond didn't pass. Cause that was one of the issues I was going to bring up to give replace. And, um, there was a donation to Extreme Networks, which is our networking company that we purchased. That's the brand that we use for wireless and wired network. And they had a donation from another school district that we were able to take advantage of. So we replaced the entire wireless infrastructure over the summer and then pieces of it this school year, um, for free. Well, I should say we, we had to buy some licensing. That was a few thousand dollars compared to, you know, like tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars, so. Yeah, so that extended out our support for a few years to kind of kick the can on.
How, how long are the support cycles on these things generally?
I think at the end of, maybe you can help me with this too, but I think it's at the end of sale. It goes five years out. I know for the wired, um, equipment, that's the case, but wireless.
That's improved, right? It used to be even worse, didn't it?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not as familiar with extremes. I'm not as previous to.
That's just crazy. Five years obsolete.
Yeah, you want to buy something, yeah, that's the latest that you can, and then that'll extend that lifetime.
Yeah, good.
Um, but we can, you know, we can make it last as, we'll work with what we have, so.
Well, and when it goes out of support, it becomes unreliable though.
Yeah, and at that point, yeah, you kind of fix some things on your own and have to work off your own knowledge to make sure you keep it going, so. Uh, we upgraded our smart software, um, throughout last school year. That runs our, our, um, smart boards, which are interactive for the students. Um, that was quite a bit out of date. And so it's nice to see our teachers have up-to-date software for that. Um, we implemented a new web filter solution, classroom management and student safety solution. We had a, we've had, um, I guess some eye-opening experiences with the student safety monitor. Um, but I think some, a good moment or two, we were able to be very helpful to, to families with that solution. So, um, that was really neat to see. Uh, central office, um, as you know, they have a, a new location. And, uh, part of that is, comes with monthly savings costs. So we purchased a leased, um, line. Where we had to pay for connectivity from them to our campus. So that costs, they're a part of our private network now. So that cost will go away. So we'll start saving. So for our investment, it's probably about like four years out. But after that, we'll, we'll be in the black, I guess you would say, so. Infinite Campus, um, so Doug implemented the Infinite Campus store, um, which allowed for field trip forms, permission slips, payments. And, um, schools can list items for sale. Um, so that's all electronic. Whereas before we had to manage all of those payments. And so that's, that's been a great add-on this year. See, new copiers in the district, so, um, it's nice to see that they have a new fleet. So that got replaced my school year. And then, uh, just implemented a new time clock solution. That seems to be going pretty good. We implemented some tablets, iPads. Throughout the district that they've used for that. And they're also able to, um, they have more, more options. Like they can use their phone if they're on the district wireless network and, and district devices that are giving that gives them more possibilities for that. So, all right, so hopping on to the program eval real quick. Um, so just, uh, to review roughly kind of what we support. I put in there, we've got nine hundred plus computers and laptops, um, over four thousand Chromebooks and Chromeboxes, over three hundred tablets. Over forty-five servers, over four hundred phones, twenty-five copiers, over two hundred seventy-five classroom projectors. Over a hundred twenty-five interactive whiteboards. Um, and then other technologies include document cameras, Apple TVs, scanners, remote presenters. Video web cameras, et cetera. Um, and, um, of course our wireless and wired network. And then a variety of software, just to kind of name a few things that our department supports. Um, so just recently in August, twenty twenty-one, replaced our Infinite Campus server. And that server came with a firewall. So that's just extra protection for our student information system, um, to keep that information safe. So I wanted to bring that up. Um, our internet speed is still meeting our needs, so that's good. We're at one bit with AT&amp;T. Uh, we started recently using a free internet security resource from the Center for Internet Security. And I'm sorry, I'm a little cold in here, so I thought I'd wear my jacket up here, but, but I'm trying to stay warm on top of it. Uh, but, uh, that's a free service that was offered that they're trying to get to a website. Uh, they catch that and block it. Um, whether it's malware or a link they click on. So that's been a really nice resource and it doesn't cost anything, so. So as far as, um, some items that we're working on, I just wanted to highlight two things. Um, our wired infrastructure, kind of right behind our wireless infrastructure, will need to get replaced. Um, so I'm going to be looking at that. And then our virtual environment, um, servers will be, that need to be refreshed. We've got three of those. And, um, this year we're going to replace our, I guess you could say our storage piece of that puzzle, so. And that's all I've got. If you have questions.
I was impressed to see all those blue wires disappear into the walls of Central Mount.
Yeah.
That was a lot.
How big is your team, Aaron? How many people are supporting all of this?
So we've got six, um, people. We have three types that are out in the buildings, um, every day, um, supporting the district. And then, um, myself, Doug and Karen are in the office side, but we also take a lot of phone calls and split there. Uh, yeah.
So what the hell?
Six.
Yep.
Great board.
Thank you. Okay, uh, there is no unfinished business, so moving on to new business. First item is simply approving the special board of education minutes from December the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. So I need a motion to approve as presented. John, second. Angie, any questions, concerns of that? Any vote, all in favor? To approve? Only three of us. Oh, and, oh, four. Okay, four. And begins in two extensions, right? Next item, uh, motion to approve a new district school bus from Midwest Transit Equipment in the amount of one hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Second.
Rob and John. Questions, concerns, explanations. Are we good? I like it when you guys are ready to spend money. Gosh darn. Okay, those in favor? I don't buy off the car that easy. Okay, six oh. Next item is, uh, the twenty, twenty twenty-three summer school program. A motion to approve the summer school program is presented. John?
Second.
And Eric? Any questions? Okay, those in favor? Six oh. Motion to approve the school calendar as presented for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Motion.
Angie?
Second.
Eric? Questions, comments?
Was there a lot of drama around this one?
Do what?
Was there a lot of drama around this one?
I wasn't on that committee.
It's probably the smoothest one that I've ever been.
Really?
Yeah.
I. Always astounding how someone was.
I gave them a sample calendar, kind of something that I had put together. And I gave them, um, the regulations that we have to abide by. Split everybody into three groups, mixing them between, um, elementary and secondary people. Let's come up with some different ideas. Do we have different ideas? So we had one meeting. It lasted about an hour, hour and a half, and, um, they moved a couple of things around. Did teacher work day on November first, um, instead of a regular student tennis day, we moved spring break back a week. Yeah, this calendar does incorporate thirty-two late starts. So that will be new for our staff and as well as our community. So Wednesdays, um, we will start, everybody will start an hour later. And I plan on putting that communication together for parents here tomorrow. Um, but no, it was a smooth process.
And the PD days are following on Wednesday as well, are they?
PD days are, are, right now are also on Wednesdays. Yes. So by doing the late starts, we had to, uh, add five point four, some, something, um, days. So I removed two teacher work days, so that there's only one each semester. And two PD days, first semester, two second semester, in conjunction with the three, um, days before the kids get here in August. But they were very excited about, the calendar committee was very excited about the, the late ends.
Good. This was the smoothest, I think, the calendar committee has operated since I've been on the board.
Is that all because of the splitting up in groups or?
Well, the, yes, I, I think so. There's not a whole lot you can do with it. Um, there was some discussion, well, we don't want to start it on Monday. Okay, well, then we need to get rid of, we need to go to school at December twenty-second. We replaced it over here. And we need to go to school on Friday for Labor Day because there's not a whole lot you can, to mess with, so.
Sounds very smooth. Once they moved that we couldn't start any earlier.
Correct. The law changed several years ago. That kind of confined us. We can't start ten days before, um, Labor.
Labor Day.
We used to, we, historically, we have started the week before. We have been the past couple of years. So it's limited us on the number of days and playing with those days.
Any other questions? Okay, those in favor of approving the school calendar? Six oh. Next item is a motion to declare the office building at Five Ridgewood Drive, sir plus property for the purpose of selling.
Motion.
Rob and Eric? Conversations, discussion?
Um, yeah, but this property is, uh, the old central office building is, um. We have now moved, um.
we have now moved onto campus and so that facility, we don't need anymore as an office facility. So, kind of the plan, remember when we purchased that property was to, we knew we had some renovations, was to then sell it and use those funds to kind of.
Offset.
Offset the investment to get hopefully more than what it costs to do the renovations. But whereas Clovis and so, putting it out there for surplus.
Any other questions, concerns? Those in favor? It is now surplus, six oh. And then the next item is a motion to approve the sale to be conducted by sealed bid with a stated minimum reserve bid of two hundred? No, three hundred.
Or if they're three hundred.
We're gonna start with three hundred thousand. I almost kicked over here, real bargain.
Yeah.
Okay, John and second, Eric? Okay, after I corrected my mistake, is that, okay. Questions, concerns? Okay? Okay, those in favor?
Yeah, I want to point out, this is gonna come up within a month, right? Next month?
Yes.
Okay.
I will advertise it and get everything together, submit it to the leader for publication and out and about on social media and such. And then the bid opening will be on, I'll state it for February twenty-third, which will be probably a new, our board meeting is that afternoon.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, those in favor of the sealed bid process? Yes? Okay, six oh. Which? I'm making sure I'm not skipping something. Have a good night tonight. Okay. Um, I need a motion to recess, meaning to go into executive session.
Second.
Eric and John? Those in favor? Okay. We'll take a.